Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We'll call this meeting back to order at 6:37 PM. Will please rise as Kathleen, the clerk, will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may I please have a motion in a second that we approve the April 18th, 2023 agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Board members, may I please have a motion in a second that we approve the consent agenda as listed in tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Questions on that? No. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have a Treasury report this evening. May I please have a motion in a second that the Treasury report dated month ending February 28, 2023 be approved as submitted?
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. That brings us to special reports.
Wonderful. We do have one special report tonight, and that is the Sustainability Committee update. And so we do have Mr. Eric Wallen as our advisor for the Environmental Club, who helps harness the power of the Sustainability Committee. As a reminder, we actually had members of the Environmental Club the last couple of years come to the board and ask for a Sustainability Committee. And so the Sustainability Committee became really a district committee under the Board of Education. And I know you work really hard, along with Dr. Driffl and Mr. English, our Director of Facilities, and of course, Mr. Wallen. So we have lots of students here. I see we have five seats up here. Is everybody coming up? Okay. All right. So if the five could come up, you have microphones that should be working. You have a clicker that all your slides are loaded up. And if you could just introduce yourself and let us know what grade you're in, and then the floor is yours.
So thank you.
Are the rest here for moral support?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You can pull up chairs if you want to come sit with them. It's okay.
Wonderful.
Wait, why is the font so small? It's okay.
Just so you know, the font that came was really small. I did make a bunch of changes just to make the font bigger, but not on that slide.
We can make it big on our screen, which is good for me.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, sounds good.
Hi, my name is Bee, and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name's Anna, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Eric, and I'm also a senior.
Hi, I'm Marietta, and I'm also a senior.
Hi, I'm Dahlia, and I'm a senior.
So first, I just wanted to give a couple thank yous, first and foremost, to Mr. Wallen, our club advisor. He's really been with us since the very beginning. Just as Dr. Putnam mentioned, he's really been helping us organize and harness our power. So we're very grateful to him. And the rest of the district administration, especially Dr. Putnam, Dr. Driffl, and Mr. English, you've been a huge support to us. And our committee members, Luann Durin and Katie Rig. All these adults have been an incredible support network for us as we've been working on our plan. And then last but not least, my sincerest gratitude to the board. For the past three years, you've listened to us, you've supported us, you've respected us, you've treated us like adults. And I think that that's really powerful, and we really, really appreciate that. So we're really excited to share this with you. So why are we here? I'm sure you all know that we are very, very passionate about the environment and about sustainability. We created this plan because we firmly believe that the district needs to make some immediate changes if we want to protect our communities and protect the future children that are going to be going through the school district. The district currently produces 3,152.49 metric tons of CO2 per year. That number came from Wendell, the company that we worked with to do some benchmarking. That's equivalent to the amount of CO2 needed to manufacture 3,807,355 plastic water bottles in a single year. That is a lot of CO2. We're also doing this because there are a lot of state and federal regulations that we need to meet in the next coming years, especially through the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. That's an act that I specifically lobbied for. I know Anna was involved with it as well. And that calls for, I believe, a 40% reduction in emissions over the next couple of years. Maybe it's a little more, but we'll see. So there's definitely needed changes that need to happen, and that's why the Sustainability Plan is here.
Okay. So we have our plan that has been a work in progress for three years. And as Bee said, thank you for being here. So our committee used benchmarking to determine the actions needed to be included in this plan. So that was a lot of work, and we could not have done this without the benchmarking. We conducted benchmarking in the areas of energy use and food waste. So we used two different processes. One was with Wendell, and we had a grant through what we call NYSERTA, but I'll get into that a bit later. And cafeteria waste. So we conducted that independently ourselves. And we will use this to better understand how we can improve efficiency and produce less waste, all while staying budget friendly. So we have some numbers here. And this is generated from a grant from the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. So like I said, we were able to work with Wendell, an energy auditing firm. And they calculated that four of our five school buildings and our district office fall below the national standard of 75 for Energy Star rating. This is unfortunate. But knowing this, it is apparent that steps should be taken to raise these numbers. Some more numbers. Wendell also brought to our attention the peer comparison rankings, which compare our district with similarly sized buildings and student capacities. We should also make note that Penfield High School's low rating is due to the onsite cogeneration plant. These numbers are concerning, but our district has the opportunity to significantly improve these with your support. The other important area where we audited, we audited by ourselves. In addition to energy audits, we conducted, as the Environmental Club, our own food waste audit at three district schools, including our high school, Scribner Road Elementary School, and Cobble's Elementary School. We were able to calculate how many pounds of waste was generated in a typical day in the cafeteria, which was about 200 pounds per school per day. These audits all yielded lots of data, but what can be done to lessen our energy use and food waste?
So we will first begin by addressing the infrastructure and transportation. So when things like toilets and windows break, or even like things as big as school buses, we should be considerate of, we should consider replacing them with more energy-efficient options. And we are excited to have school buses that are electric coming as soon as the 2023 to 2024 school year to replace our old diesel buses. We also would recommend biannual reassessments of solar power, electric busing, car charging stations, the dishwashers, mowing reduction, online textbooks, and just overall electrification in the school district. Although some of these projects may not be feasible at this time, it is critical to revisit these areas of improvement regularly.
Now, we're going to move into the next section of the plan, which is cafeteria improvements. During our food waste audits, we found that students are discarding almost 30 pounds of untouched food per day in each school. Most of that food came from canned fruits and vegetables. We believe that bringing more locally sourced produce to school lunches will decrease food waste because of the quality of the food will be better and more appetizing. We also believe one of the most critical steps in reducing waste is by creating composting programs at all schools. Composting teaches students about science, nature, responsibility, and organization. One of the main goals of the plan is implementing a pilot composting program at one elementary school during the 2023 to 2024 school year. The district can expand the program to all elementary schools by 2025 and to Bay Trail and PHS by 2026. Student input suggested that meat alternatives could help reduce food waste. Providing more vegetarian and vegan options would help teach students to eat sustainably from a young age. We suggest creating Meatless Option Mondays or reassessing the possibility of reopening the salad bar at PHS. It closed during COVID, and since salads have become prepackaged, students are more reluctant to eat vegetables. And many parts of the salad end up going to waste when students inevitably don't like every component. We also suggest creating victory gardens at different school buildings. We could offer volunteer hours for students to care for gardens, and different classes could utilize the space for projects, research, and hands-on learning experiences.
So building off of our victory garden idea, we have laid out some areas of curriculum growth for the elementary, middle, and high schools. So for elementary school, we suggest updating the curriculum to include more active learning experiences to get young kids excited and passionate about the outdoors because the earlier children are exposed to this type of learning, the more likely they are to want to fight for and protect the environment. Compost programs would assist in these efforts because they're a simple way for children to have interactive learning, which can also be replicated in their lives outside of school. For middle school, we would like to see increased conversation about climate change and civic responsibility. Of course, it is beneficial to reiterate how to reduce, reuse, and recycle. However, it is necessary to go beyond just that. Again, the earlier students begin speaking in a safe setting about climate change, the sooner they can learn how to make a difference. We suggest introducing students to different opportunities that allow them to become proactive in their community. By furthering these discussions about making an impact on the community's environment, it can also benefit students who are overwhelmed with any sort of climate anxiety. At PHS, one way we are encouraging the conversation about these topics is through Green Week. In the future, we plan to expand PHS's Green Week by reaching out and working with the middle school. We hope Green Week eventually gains district-wide recognition. In addition to these curriculum additions, we can also do a better job of utilizing the woods behind Bay Trail, since it's in such a convenient area, as a learning opportunity for science classes to be immersed in nature. And as high school seniors in the high school, we have a unique perspective when it comes to bettering the curriculum to adapt to our changing climate. In addition to the composting and victory gardens we previously mentioned, we believe that increasing emphasis on environmental engineering in engineering classes is a crucial step in preparing our students for the future of engineering jobs. The high school could also work with EMCC to provide more opportunities for students to learn about electrical, constructional, and automotive trades, all critical in environmental protection and sustainability. To further help students with environmental career exploration, we could work with students and staff to plan optional talks with environmental speakers in H21, our lecture hall. This, coupled with off-campus field trips and hands-on science activities, could better help prepare students for the future of careers in America.
So to finish off the plan, we concluded by restating a lot of recommendations that Wendell gave to us. So Wendell worked with us to survey two different district buildings. They went to Harris Hill Elementary School, and they also went to PHS. So they decided to go to Harris Hill, given Harris Hill's very, very low ratings on both of the rating scales that they used. It was by far our lowest performing building. We actually had the opportunity to walk through the entire school with them. And after going through the entire school with Wendell, we went to the attic, we went through the gym, through the kitchen. We really saw how thorough they were being. And so we really trust Wendell when they make these recommendations. They were not made lightly. So this is coming in addition to the earlier infrastructure and transportation recommendations that they already made, including increases to interior lighting improvements and gymnasium ventilation upgrades, along with kitchen ventilation upgrades. These are both effective, sustainable, efficient. This is about reducing our costs and increasing our sustainability. They also decided to survey PHS for a couple reasons. Number one, it obviously has our largest student population, the most staff, the most teachers. It's our largest building. We also have the co-gen system. So it makes it really important that we continue updating and continue making it more sustainable and efficient. They had pretty similar suggestions as to Harris Hill with kitchen ventilation and gymnasium ventilation upgrades. But they also had a pretty unique idea, including a pool cover. We are currently using a lot, copious amounts of energy just by heating the pool. And all the heat kind of goes away because we don't have a pool cover. So we're wasting a lot of money heating it when we could just get a pool cover and reduce it. Obviously, there's a lot more detail in the actual plan regarding similar ideas and reevaluations on future capital projects like solar power. Obviously, solar power isn't feasible now. It's way too expensive at this time. But in the next couple of years, the prices are really going down. And reassessing those future capital projects is going to be critical if we're ever going to reduce our energy consumption to a relatively low level. So personally, I think that the most important part of this plan is going to be implementation. Implementation is critical because we're all graduating soon. And so we're really relying on club members, committee members, and the district administration to really carry this on once we leave. We put a lot of effort into this. We've put three years of work into this. We clearly care about it a lot. And there's a lot of student support behind it. So it's really about implementing it in the future that's going to be the most important part. So we ask that we immediately begin discussions on the following programs. This would be curriculum improvement, like Marietta talked about. Elementary compost program development that Dahlia stated. This could, discussions about this should begin in the summer if we're going to have the compost program begin in the fall. We also want to continue our biannual infrastructure and transportation reassessments. We want more electric buses. We want to start talking about solar, about wind, about other more sustainable options. Implementation of Wendell's recommended energy conservation measures. That's things like the kitchen ventilation upgrades and the pool cover. And then, of course, the cafeteria menu improvement, trying to get more locally sourced options, maybe even bringing back the salad bar. All these things are feasible this upcoming year. This is all totally feasible for PHS and for the district. So I'm going to pass it off to Anna for this last part.
So for all the reasons stated, this plan is essential. There are roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, 5,000 students in the Penfield Central School District at this time, and they spend lots of time here. 13 years for most of us. So a sustainable school is a safe school because the air these students breathe, the foods they eat, and everything in between, and the world they'll go off into someday, they're making a difference. We need to start here. So I am on a board for Monroe County in a similar way with their, what they call Climate Action Plan. And they're doing the same things as us. And our club has done this. So it's happening on bigger levels, and I think it should start here.
Just to build off of what Anna said, our district is here, the schools are here, to provide education, support, and safety for our community. And releasing over 3,000 metric tons of CO2 per year is not educating, supporting, and protecting the safety of our community and our citizens in our community. It's incongruent with the ideas of the district, and we need to make a change now. We believe that we can make a change in this town, and it starts with this Sustainability Plan. So thank you all so much. If you have any questions, we're here, so you can ask us. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you all.
That really was, I mean, really, yes. I'm a little speechless, and that usually doesn't happen to me. That was lovely. Also, for the community to know, we received ahead of time, probably a few weeks ago, a very thorough, like, and not that this wasn't thorough, but incredibly thorough, report with a lot of different backup information, cost analysis of like a pool cover versus, you know, like what we're going to get back from it and energy savings. So it's just really, really outstanding, the work that you've done, and it really shows. And it shows tonight. You guys were wonderful, very articulate. Questions, board members, or comments?
I have one question. I know you're all seniors. Are there any underclassmen on the committee?
Yes. So we do have currently three juniors on the committee. We've been trying to harness more support for the club during this week, during Green Week. We currently have a couple ongoing projects trying to get more interest in the club. We recently started a fundraising activity where we're passing seeds to different friends, like around the district and around the school. And it's trying to increase student support for the Environmental Club to try to get some underclassmen involved.
You've just done such great work. I would hate to see it stall, so keep that up.
Yes, I have, sorry, folks. I have a comment and maybe a few questions. So congratulations. That was amazing. Thank you so much for all the work you've done. And you're right, we need to step up and do something. Dr. Driffl? He's the money guy. I throw him under the bus all the time, on the electric bus. So I think what you have suggested is definitely feasible, like the gardens and the composting, and there are services. If we compost ourselves, great. Or if we can't compost ourselves because of the meat factor, we can outsource that as well. I'm really excited about the cafeteria. I think that's where we should start, is with the cafeteria. Food needs to be more appealing. When it's fresher, it's probably going to be eaten more often. And I'm very excited about the Meatless Mondays. We do that at my house sometimes. Meatless Mondays and the other options because this is what our world is now. And when you think of other cultures who don't eat meat and they consume only plant-based foods, it's more inclusive, and it's wonderful. So thank you, folks. And I know you're all graduating this year, but you want to stay on in the district? You want a job? Bring them on. Oh, Dr. Kenny's not here. He hides people. But thank you, folks. Really appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you.
Nicole, you had a comment or a question?
Oh, yeah, just a technical question. When you say ventilation improvements, what do you mean? And how would that help?
So when we toured through Harris Hill, Wendell noticed that the ventilation in the Harris Hill cafeteria specifically was so poor that they were wasting a ton of energy with the fans while simultaneously releasing all of like the heat and gas. It was very counterintuitive. I don't know the details. I'm sure we could ask Mr. English because he knows all the infrastructure stuff. And I don't know all the infrastructure stuff. But I do know that it was apparently using a lot more energy than needed to be used.
If you had fresh air, you didn't need fans.
Yeah.
And at Harris Hill as well. And this is a big deal because of their, like, different-shaped classrooms. It's individual to that school, but with heating and cooling, too. So big thing.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah. Again, first off, is the five of you, is anyone else on the committee here in there? Can you raise your hand so we can see who else? Oh, good. Thanks. And I just want to address, the first thing you'd said is that you appreciate us treating like adults. You know, from a couple of years ago when you first started presenting, the quality of your presentations were of the kind of thing we would expect from adults. That's why you're being treated that way. And you continue to do that. So again, I think you've done fantastic work. You've left a great legacy for the rest of the students to continue. And you know, your observations were very interesting. We just did the building condition survey, and that's generally about maintenance, you know, keeping things healthy, making sure they're in good shape, they're working well, they meet the educational needs, the curriculum needs of them. And I don't know how much of an environmental component has. And I guess I'd never really looked at it in that context. And that might be something, and that's a five-year survey that we do as opposed to a biannual. But that might be something to add into, you know, into that or just something, or just, again, supporting what they're saying, doing a periodic survey of the, not just the maintenance and operations, but the efficiencies as well. And I agree with that. I like the environmental engineering classes. You know, really, you know, especially on the high school level, being college and career-ready, which is what we always try to promote. You know, what is the future careers that come along? And that is definitely one of them. So I think that's a great suggestion. And along with implementation. You're absolutely right. You know, there's a lot of great ideas out there. And we always see it when New York State passes laws. The great at passing laws, and they're terrible implementing. And we all suffer for it. And that's just my, one of my peeves. So implementation is important, and I like that you had a good implementation plan in here. So again, this was a great presentation, and then the report was great. You know, I just, again, I hope that the additional students, once we're graduating this year, continue to carry this on because you are providing a great service to the district.
Thank you so much.
You have another comment?
Just one more thing. So I was with Mark when we were, and Catherine, when we were touring Harris Hill this week. And Mr. English was with us. And he was, you know, showing us what needs to be done, et cetera. And he was talking about replacing a window at Harris Hill. And my question to him was, okay, Mr. English, is it energy efficient? He goes, oh, yes. Everything that is being replaced now is energy efficient,
Everything that is being replaced now is energy efficient, and they are thinking about sustainability. And so, just to let you know, there's a window that's going to be energy efficient in Harris Hill.
Yes, and Mr. English has been so, so supportive this entire time with our plan, like, from beginning to end. He has been there for us, helping us with this, and we really trust him with our buildings.
Right.
Dr. Driffl as well has been super helpful, and like someone said, he knows a lot about the financials. So, we have been, you know, we've been thinking about that too. It's always on the forefront of our minds.
Well, thank you. I'm sure Dr. Putnam has something to say, because he usually does.
Of course he does. I would just tell you, first of all, every once in a while, I realize how old I'm getting, because I think I started meeting with the environmental club when you were in your freshman year, and now you're graduating. So, great. Mr. Wallen looks exactly the same. I would say, I have one question, and I can't remember from the report, but when you looked at food waste, they looked at the high school and then a couple of elementary schools. And the high school amount of waste was less than the elementary schools. Did, did you look at both the commons and the cafeteria, or just the cafeteria?
So, we looked at both. I think part of the reason that the waste in the elementary schools was higher was partly because of the food that was served. The food that was served at the elementary schools was a chili that all the kids hated. And so, they threw most of it out. And then, when we went to, I believe it was Cobble's that had the hot dogs. Is that just me? Scribner. Scribner had hot dogs, and there was no meat waste, because the kids liked hot dogs. So, obviously, there are a little bit of flaws comparing buildings together, but we did do both the cafeteria and the commons. The other thing about it is that a lot of, all the seniors, they never go to the commons to eat lunch. They usually go out to Dunkin' or Starbucks to get their food for open lunch, so that also could account for less food waste.
That's right. Thank you. And I was, I was curious about that, that I would think the high school would have more. So, I didn't even think about the fact of, of hot dog day verse chili day verse taco in a bag day, so pizza day. So, thank you. The other piece is just really for both the board, the community, and, and kudos to our students. They, we, we had these conversations four years ago and even before, and it's this conversation around sort of that budget neutral, right? So, as a public school district that utilizes tax dollars to do things, and I, I heard that in this presentation, like solar's really expensive right now, but in the future, that could come down in cost. And so, in order to make sure that we're sustainable and we're able to support many of these requests, we also have to make sure that it doesn't cost a great deal more, so we can, we can do that. So, I, I love that in your presentation, you sort of hit upon that. It was very thoughtful in the planning. And so, the last thing I'd say is, is really about making sure that whatever we do is sustainable for sustainability, right? So, we, I think you may be aware, but we did composting in Cobble's. It was started by, really a big push by one of your members, Mrs. Duran, I see in the background, who was an incredible teacher, and we always need subs if you want to come back. I know you're living the life of retirement, but I think that, you know, that really did, and then COVID had a big impact with that in terms of how, what we were able to do. So, I, I think that's a great piece. It's a learning piece for kids and for students, and the goal then was to build it into then middle school and high school. So, I think we're getting back to some of those, you know, hopefully pre-COVID things that we were able to put into place. So, I just, I'm really in awe. I, I, you, you say a lot about Penfield students and the work you put into this. You don't get a grade on it, and this much work goes in. The last question I have for you is, does this go to the town at all? Have you talked to the town of Penfield as, as well in terms of some of the sustainability?
So, we did provide an update to our town, and they were very pleased with that. We had talked to them previously, some of our members, about another thing in our community, energy-wise, but that's a story for another day. They were also very receptive to that. So, they've been very supportive as well.
And also, both Anna and I are on, we work with Color Penfield Green, and Katie Rig also works with Color Penfield Green, and they work directly with the town on things too. So, this has been hand in hand.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And again, I just second your thank yous to Dr. Driffl and Mr. English, who I'll work closely with you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, we're done with that, right? All right.
That's all I got.
So, Lila, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening. So, just to start off with a couple of the district-wide updates, tonight is the Night of Locomotion. So, this is a musical performance that is featuring a lot of ensembles, including Midtown and Uptown Express, as well as multiple elementary school a cappella groups. And this will also feature Brighton's All-Male A Cappella Group. And next weekend is the Penfield Jazz fundraiser as well. At PHS, PHS had their first flag football scrimmage. So, this girls' sport is new this year and has been very popular with a lot of students already signed up and participating. The National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive next Friday, April 28th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the West Gym, and this is also open to community members. Seniors in AP Literature went on a field trip to Jiva to see the play And So We Walked. And this play was completely written, directed, and performed by one woman who told the story of her own life and experience being Native American and walking the Trail of Tears. The robotics team is currently in Houston for the World Championships, and PHS is continuing its Penfield promise and collecting different items at every home sports game. And this weekend is starting off our multitude of events for the spring with the junior prom at Kerry Lake. At Bay Trail, the Fly Fishing Club went to Ellison Park in the morning to fish. Students watched an interactive performance by the Unleashed Improv troupe. And tomorrow is the Bay Trail Strings Concert at 7:30 p.m. At Scribner, students are participating in a new gym unit that's combining music with PE. So, the teachers have worked together to create a curriculum that balances the two, which has been, students have been really receptive to. And also at Scribner, there is a new book vending machine where students can get books for free, and so these are tokens that are given out for kids that are being Scribner kids, who cares, and also as a birthday present. And next Friday is the Red Wings Night at Scribner, at Frontier Field, and the Scribner Chorus will be singing the National Anthem. At Cobble's, they had their Suzuki concert last week. At Indian Landing, the Drama Club is putting on another musical, Press Start, next Saturday. And students at Indian Landing are also celebrating Earth Week, and they're including different dress-up days, like wearing green for the earth on April 27th, and a day that encourages all students to bring their lunch. And lastly, at Harris Hills, author and illustrator Peter Brown visited and met with students to discuss his book, The Wild Robot. Thank you.
Wow, there's a lot going on. Ooh. Questions or comments for Lila? No? Are you playing flag football?
I am not.
Just curious. I was going to get the scoop. Thank you, Lila.
Thank you.
And we're on to super reports.
Great. All right. So, I do have some student and staff honors, a couple of Penfield updates, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for our business updates, as the board tonight needs to consider approving the budget to move forward for our vote. A kudos sportsmanship award. Congratulations to our boys basketball team on being named the winner of the Thomas Emanuel Sportsmanship Award by the International Association of Approved Basketball Officials. And Penfield was the highest-rated school by all of the referees in Section 5, and that is Coach Ellis receiving that award. So, kudos to, to that team, and again, making Penfield very proud. On that, we talked a little bit earlier about George English, and this is, the Penfield Central School District has been named the recipient of Utica National School Safety Excellence Award at the titanium level for 2023. This honor recognizes school district's safety efforts that go above and beyond to provide a safe, healthy, and focused culture for learning. Kudos to the work that George does, as well as Brandon Fox, and all through Dr. Driffl, because everything costs money. Fair enough. Robotics award, we mentioned they are in Texas right now for internationals, and our, our team 15-11 earned the Engineering Inspiration Award at the Tech Valley Regional Competition in Albany. This award celebrates respect and appreciation for engineering in our school and our community. We worked with the team, just so you know, so they could do a charter bus. Typically, if you're going all the way to Albany, it's a charter bus. Thanks to Mike Galler, our Director of Transportation, there was an issue at the last minute. We have to check all charter buses, make sure that they have insurance, all those pieces. Although it was a brand-new, beautiful bus, they couldn't produce their insurance in time. And so, at the last minute, early in the morning, we made the shift and our students rode the big, beautiful, yellow school bus to Albany. But they were very appreciative. They were able to get there on time. It all worked out, and the district does not pay for charter buses that can't have all their paper in order. But again, I just, as kudos to all of the work. It helps to get that robotics team where they need to go. Another community service award is Penfield High School was overwhelmingly named the winner of Primetime Ball's Community Service School of the Year Award for its year-long commitment to Penfield Promise and providing food and supplies for residents of E.L. Tower. Congratulations to PHS. Lots of social media, kudos for that. And our students and our staff and our community don't provide in order to get awards, but it always is nice to be, to be named for the work that our students are really doing. Any questions on student and staff honors?
Or members' questions? No?
Good. All right. I got a couple of updates. One is, and the board's aware of this, we've had some conversations, and that is assistant principals at our K-5 schools. So, Penfield currently has, does not have, and hasn't had assistant principal roles at our elementary schools. The only administrator at our elementary school is our building principal. We have continued to grow. Our, our schools are large, and over the last couple of years, we've had some district conversations on do we add assistant principals, like many of the schools around us. I've heard from the principals, I've heard from teachers and the teachers' union, and I've also been hearing from families in terms of adding additional support. One of the biggest pieces, as I walk through this, this sort of background, is we've gotten requests to add assistant principals to our four elementary schools. Really, the purpose is for assistant principals to support students, families, and the principal. And then APs, assistant principals, would be able to conduct formal observations with New York State's requirement on APPR. Every non-tenured teacher has to be observed three times as a formal observation, as well as one walkthrough observation. And we continue to hire new staff, and we have more staff than we had, you know, 10, 20 years ago, in terms of all the support we give. So, bringing some of that off of the principal's plate, like we're able to do at the middle school and high school, because assistant principals conduct teacher observations as well, required by state of education. And then APs will be able to manage the building when the principal is not present. So, you know, currently, what we've dealt with is if a president, president, the president's out. If the principal's out, then we try to find somebody to fill. We might have a director from district office step in. We might have a teacher in charge. And what we have continued to see, not just in Penfield, but across the county, state, and nation, is a lot of impact of COVID when it comes to behaviors and social, emotional expertise of our students. And so, really, we've seen trying to support our, our kids and their families. So, a lot of conversations, and we are looking at, in this budget, that Dan will talk about, Dr. Driffl will talk about, is there is an elementary AP position for each of our four elementary schools to provide that support. We are working with the Penfield Administrative Council to look at being a little different as with our elementary, that they were looking at basically an 11-month position. So, they wouldn't necessarily need to be in the building during breaks and all summer, but that's what we're working on now, and we would be bringing a, a more thorough description of that 11-month to the board for approval through an MOA with the administrators' union. But this really is from a lot of conversation and hearing from a number, again, of faculty, asking, staff, families, and making sure that we support our elementary principals with additional administrative support in their buildings. The only thing I ever win at is I get pictures. So, as long as we don't have our student rep have pictures, and I, at least I, so here is the book vending machine that you did a lovely job talking through. Very cool. Scribner Road is the first school in Penfield to have one. And it really is, it's a vending machine that works on tokens, and it is stocked with books. They are all scholastic books, and so the PTA has a partnership, so they get them, the PTA is buying the books, and they're getting them at a, a much reduced cost. And I happen to be over at Scribner last week, and students are in love with it. They think it's so cool. So, different levels of books. And this year, it's going to be for birthdays. For ju, they're just focused on 5th grade, because they want to make sure all 5th grade students, before they leave Scribner, get an opportunity. And then next year, it'll be birthdays, and also, I love that they talk about half-birthdays for those kids who have a summer birthday, they celebrate their half-birthday. And then also, students who are, you know, doing, doing good and, and winning. So, really, really cool. But it's a vending machine for books, so I've never actually seen one. It's really neat, and again, a great partnership with the Scribner Road PTA.
So cool.
So, I'm very excited to be able to just share that Dr. Roberts is one of our board members, and she has received her doctorate from National University, so it is now Dr. Roberts. And so, just a huge congratulations. We know how much work it is, and to do that as a board member and an educator and everything else you have going on. So, congratulations, Dr. Roberts. I think that's wonderful. And so, Dr. Roberts and I talked about this. So, the other piece, just for the change, and we get to announce it once, is returning to a maiden name, Dr. Roberts. So, it's not a new board member. It was, but I love that it's no longer Ms. Belsor, it's Dr. Roberts. So, wonderful. We did, yeah.
Look it!
There you go.
See that? That is so cool. It's a little thing.
So, thanks for Kathleen, for, for getting that, and for Nancy, for, for working through this. And so, thank you very much, and again, congratulations. And I know you were really excited for me to do that, so. And then the last update I have before I turn it over to Dr. Driffl is just, this Sunday is the Penfield Education Foundation 5K. If, we have about two, the foundation has about 200 people registered to run. It's supposed to be beautiful weather, Sunday, 80 degrees and sunny, is what I'm going to stick to. But if people are interested, you can still come out and register at the event. You can register online still, and if you want to come out that morning to register and run, walk. Again, all of the money from the foundation goes to student scholarships, and some goes to grants for classrooms and clubs. But the vast majority all goes to student scholarships through the scholarship committee at the high school, and that, those get announced at the honors convocation in June. So, I will now turn it over. I think I might, is there a question? Any questions on?
Question? Oh, not a question. No question. But I heard the board was, for the foundation, was leading in running it.
That is awesome. I may have heard, so just know, there is a prize to the building that has the most participation by how many people are in your building versus how many people, right? So, that, that percentage is a winner. That currently is held, every year we've done this, by Harris Hill. Right now, I will tell you, as of last night, district office is in the lead for percentage-wise. But, but, yeah.
So, is the board considered a building in themselves, then?
What's that?
Oh, yeah, we consider it a...
Can we just be considered a building in ourselves?
100%, yeah. If the board gets seven out of seven signing up, I think 100%. I'm sure this board will say, let the trophy go to the building that, that won. But, it still has great bragging rights. We can share.
We can share.
Yeah, I think, again, it's a great event for, for kids and trying to raise money for the, for the scholarship.
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
I just, I'm curious about the, the vending machines. Do, do you think our other schools will get vending machines?
I tend to find that in Penfield, and I've been here long enough, the one thing that gets people going is a little competition. So, again, I don't want to take away an awe from the Scribner PTA, who really worked to bring this to Scribner, but I think it's a pretty cool idea that I could see, I could see other schools doing as well. But is that really that partnership with the PTA, because it is a cost of buying the books and keeping it going?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Other questions, anyway? Yes?
Yeah. Rumor has it that there's another elementary school that is...
Working on it right now?
Working on.
There you go.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to blow their cover, in case, you know, but yeah, there's another elementary school. But Tom, could you explain the difference? When you were talking about observations for the APs?
Yeah.
There was a formal observation and then a walkthrough? Could you, can you tell me?
Yeah, so it's actually, the piece is announced observations is the terminology. So, teachers in New York State have to receive three, in Penfield, have to receive three announced observations when, before they receive tenure, which typically, for a new teacher, it's four years of your non-tenure probationary status. And they receive each year three announced observations, which means they know the principal's coming in to observe them. And there's a pre-conference first, where you talk about what it's going to look like, and there's, that's a conversation and learning. And then the observation, which is like 40 minutes to 60 minutes, depending. And then, it's a conversation afterwards, the post-conference, to really discuss what we saw, strengths, areas of growth. And per New York State, teachers get a score for that. And then, it's not the walkthrough. The correct term I should have used is an unannounced observation, and that is when it is a, a stop-through. So, the, the teacher doesn't know that the administrator's coming in. At the middle school and high school, you have a principal and assistant principal, so they can sort of divide and conquer the number of observations that they have to do. Where at the elementary schools, it's just been one principal doing all, all of those. And so, we do believe it really will help. It'll help with the, the workload on principals and be able to sort of spread that out. The tenured teachers, once a teacher recert, receives tenure, it's at least one formal announced observation and one unannounced observation. So, a little bit less, doesn't mean that principals aren't in those classrooms all the time, and many times, staff will ask for principals to come in, but that's like the requirement under New York State APPR.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And just to clarify, those quantities, those numbers are annual?
Those numbers are annual. Those numbers are annual.
Annual.
Yep, and there's deadlines for each one that needs to get done. So, a building that has more non-tenure teachers is going to have more observations to conduct than a building with mainly tenure teachers. And, you know, turnover in terms of really people retiring and then hiring for those positions is cyclical, right? So, we hire lots of people and then over time they retire and we're filling back up with new staff.
Other questions? Nope, okay, thank you.
No problem. I will now turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, board. Two things for your consideration this evening. The final approval of our proposed 23, 24 school budget. The full line item budget's attached in your packet tonight, but we'll go over kind of the high-level information this evening. And we'll also take a look at revenue analysis, New York State's unsettled situation and kind of what the local funding makeup is currently looking like. And then we also need to approve by statute the property tax report card. So, that's also attached in your packet by rule. We have to submit that to the state and local media within 24 hours of adoption, so we do that tomorrow. On that is information about what our projected levy is for next year and what the year-end estimated fund balance figures are come June 30th. So, this is kind of the last night of the budget development part of the process. So, we have a proposed budget tonight, so that's in green. We're amidst those legal requirements phase. So, we are doing all the legal notices, filings, sending everything to SED. We have upcoming disclosure information. I think next Tuesday we have to have the full budget materials available online, so that's not just like the full line item budget, but it's also the county exemption information, it's the administrative salary disclosures, it's the school report cards. It's a really big packet of information that we're required to put out. And then we'll talk about next steps later on, but it all culminates with that May 16th statewide vote. So, the final number, we've kind of been hovering sort of in the 7.1 range for the last, you know, three or four months, landed at a 7.12% increase, so it's $116,921,215. It's a 7.7 million, 7.7 million dollar increase. We'll take a look at these budget functions on top and a little bit more granularity in a moment. But again, if you look at those objects, you can see of the 7.7 million dollars, most of the dollars are allocated towards increasing wages and employee benefits. I want to point out that it's not just merely status quo. So, as we've talked about all along, this budget is a reflection of investment and program. So, that integrated COOTAT offering, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, we're adding the elementary assistant principals to all the buildings and then another half dozen or so staff that have been required just through student need and student interest. So, all in all, it's, you know, we're adding about 20 positions or so and as we'll see, we are going to keep the levy flat for this year, so no increase in taxes and we'll talk about, you know, what that looks like. So, here's a little bit more of the granular kind of functional cost centers for the district and I'll just quickly walk through these. So, the Board of Education, as everybody knows, are volunteers. The board does not get paid, but these are costs associated with the board functions, the budget vote, all the advertisements that are required, professional training, policy services, so on and so forth. Central office covers, Dr. Putnam's office, my office, the HR office, professional services like legal fees, auditing. That's up just on $150,000 from next year. Central services is basically B&amp;G, so that, we had a presentation on B&amp;G this year, up just under a half a million dollars. Special items is primarily that BOSI's administration that we reviewed last month. It also includes all of the district insurances that we, that we carry. School administration is Dr. Maloney's office, Dr. Potter's office, and all of our six school main offices, so the principals, the clerical folks that work there. So, this $350,000 increase on school administration does include those elementary assistant principal positions, that's where those are located. Teaching school is everything related to classroom instruction, also our specials, music, art, physical education, all that fun stuff, represents a $1.2 million increase year-over-year. Special programs is programs for students with disabilities, but also our occupational education programs. As we've talked about, the big investment there is ICOT, but then when we also talked about those BOSI's placements, seeing big increases there as well. So, about a million dollars towards BOSI's there and then a million dollars towards ICOT staffing as well. So, that represents a $2 million increase year-over-year or 12% relative. Instructional media are all of our libraries and technology programs that we have here in the district, not seeing the big increases that they have in the last couple of years as we've kind of settled into more of a steady state with those programs. Pupil services are our school counselors, school psychologists, nurses, social workers. It also includes our extracurricular clubs and our athletics. So, investments there this year with new staffing around a new school psychologist for next year and new club sports, things like that. We talked about transportation back at our February meeting, so just under $300,000 in year-over-year costs or 6%. The registration office, just salary increase there. Employee benefits, it's been a pretty good year for employee benefits, kind of what we've seen relative to, you know, the last dozen years or so. That 7% increase is almost entirely health insurance. The contributions to the pension systems weren't as bad this year and dental was flat and workers' compensation was down and we certainly haven't been paying any kind of like unemployment insurance these past couple of years. So, that $2 million is almost wholly represented in medical insurance and that 7% for the consortium is still kind of under the national trend, which is still sort of in that 8% to 10% range. Debt service kicks up a little bit in accordance with our debt service schedule, but it's more than offset by the state building aid that we receive. And the interfund transfers are the small amount of dollars that go to cover the offset for the food service fund and any summer specialized programs that we have. So, again, landing at just under $117 million for next year. Another way in which we're required to calculate the budget in New York State is the three-part budget, the component analysis budget. So, it looks at the administrative portions of the budget, the programming portions of the budget and the capital. So, you can see the current 22, 23 year there in dollars and then what each component represents proportion to the whole piece of the pie and then what it's going to look like for next year. And then you can see the year-over-year dollar increase and then the year-over-year proration percentage increase, essentially the same in terms of proration where the dollars are allocated year-over-year. So, basically just kind of hovering under 10% for administration, programming at 76.6 and capital still at that 13.4% of spending. Any questions on the expense side of things? I know we've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of months, but kind of turn over to revenue here. So, as you may or may not know, the state has not adopted a budget yet, so that was due on April 1st. They've signed three budget extenders now. The first two for one week. The one they signed yesterday was just for, I think, three days, so it expires on Thursday. Whether or not that, infer some optimism that something will get done here towards the end of the week, we're not quite sure. It's certainly not unheard of in New York State to have late budgets. Actually, the last four years have been late, but it's only been within a week or so. But going back to the 80s, 90s, early 2000s, we've had budgets that were late for months. To their credit, they haven't been this late in probably 15 years. The latest they've been long, I think it was 2005, it went into summer. So, that's, you know, almost 20 years ago. The good news is that a lot of the conversations holding up the budget progression have not been around education and investment in K-12 education. What we keep hearing is that that's, that's settled, it's done. There might be some final changes on charter school expansion. We still don't know exactly what the proposal for universal school meals might look like. There's been nothing about that. But in terms of the funding and the commitment to that third year of the foundation aid and the fully funding the expense-based aid categories, everything sounds good. So, all districts are kind of taking that at good faith and moving forward with those estimates that the governor had presented back in January. So, that's what we're using for our budget.
I have a question on that, Dan, if I didn't ask. So, what happens in those years? Like if we have to move forward with a budget and we don't have confirmation from the state?
So, eventually we'll have to get some sort of confirmation, right? Whether or not that's April, May, June, July, August. At some point, they will have to settle a budget, right? Because they have their own business to attend to. And keep in mind, their fiscal year actually started already, so if they get into summer, they're almost halfway through their fiscal year. If for whatever reason the commitments that we've heard don't come to fruition, we would have to manage that and we would have to manage that on the expense side. What that means is hiring. What that means is, you know, what does programming look like? I don't want to go down that road. It doesn't seem likely or possible that that's going to happen, but it is a little unnerving not to have the budget fully settled, so it's a never say never sort of world. But we're, you know, hearing good things that it shouldn't be a problem and we're hoping that they'll have a deal sooner rather than later.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure. So, this is the third year coinciding with a three-year phase in the foundation aid formula that we're required to put forward a plan. So, as a reminder, districts that receive more than a 10% year-over-year increase in foundation aid have been required to do this. It's important to note that the listed or suggested areas of spending that they put forward, they had five last year, this year they're seven. They're not a mandate, it's just a suggestion because foundation aid is unencumbered. We're allowed to do with it what we see fit at the local level. But in accordance with the plan, we do have to kind of tie the dollars to what we think it most aligns closely with. So, here you, we have, you know, almost a quarter of a million dollars tied to increasing graduation rates. That's kind of around programming here at the high school, around vocational education and alternative education opportunities. Reducing class sizes looks mostly at the K-6 spectrum, just ensuring that we're kind of under our soft caps in terms of class sizes. Addressing social emotional health is investment in our pupil services. So, it's that new psychologist that I mentioned, it's investments in extracurriculars and athletics. And then that $2.8 million is mostly tied to students with disabilities, but there is money in there as well for ELL, English Language Learners, and students experiencing homelessness. So, that's a tentative plan that's open to feedback from the community and the board. So, we ask anybody that has any feedback, comments, criticisms to reach out to my office by May 31st. We say May 31st because this needs to be adopted by the board by the end of the fiscal year, so that would be our June meeting and then it needs to be posted online by the end of June. And then we have to submit that information over to the state, just like last year. I'm not sure what they're doing with it necessarily, but it is part of the legislation we're required to do it. So, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to commit to that flat levy for 23, 24, so I just kind of wanted to show the context of where we've been in sort of this tax cap era. So, the, you know, the local levy limit laws of 2011 first went into effect in that 2012 year. Every year since then, Penfield Central has been at or underneath the cap and you can see, you know, in two of the last three years, we've been at 0% on the local levy. But just really demonstrating that commitment to fiscal responsibility is kind of one of the core tenets of, of the Board of Education's goals. Last time around, we talked about equalization rates in the six towns, at least the tentative figures for what it's going to be. So, at this April meeting, we always try to put forward tax rate projections. I do want to stress that this will change. This information on the equalization rates and the town assessments is not final until July. The Board of Education doesn't adopt a tax warrant until August, so there's always some wiggle. But based on those preliminary equalization rates and preliminary town assessments from five of the towns, we didn't get the updated information from Brighton, here's what we can expect for tax collection season come later this fall. Penfield would see a 3.5% reduction in the tax rate. Perrington would see a 2.2% increase. Pittford would see a 10% increase. Brighton with that massive equalization rate swing that they saw would see a 15% increase in the tax rate. Massillon, 2% reduction and Walworth, a 5% increase. One of the things I always try to take a look at is that true value tax rate because if all six towns were fully, their assessments were in line with market value, everybody was at a 100% equalization rate, that's what that true value, that full value amount would be. And that is, you could see it's a reduction of almost $2 per $1,000 of assessed value or a 9% decrease. So, again, it's just a projection. We'll put this information in the budget newsletter, but I do just constantly stress that it will change. Hopefully not by too much, but it always wiggles a little bit. And then with that, kind of looking back at that 10-year history of the true value tax rate, you can really see in the last couple of years, that true value tax rate drop-off. We were kind of, you know, hovering sort of in that $24, $25 range for many years. And then the two 0% levies coupled with those rising assessments really kind of drive that, that tax rate down. So, certainly the lowest that Penfield's been in a long time with regard to that metric. So, here's just kind of the all-up, all-in, year-over-year budget in terms of the expenditures and revenues, kind of all in one place. We're required to put forward a balanced budget, so here it is. Kind of stressing that the, you know, big education aid increase or the expected increase allows us to not have to do the, a levy increase this year. Seeing a healthy county sales tax increase as well is, you know, sales receipts continue to rise, economy's still proving resilient. All of the revenue sees a nice little jump basically around interest rates, money on the bank. Want to point out that once again this year, we're not utilizing any reserves, not having to tap into supplemental revenue to balance the budget, so that's a nice place to be. So, you know, at this point now, you know, we asked the board to approve the budget. It's a long process. We're, we're part of the effort, conversations that have gone into it over these months. You know, we're grateful to expand our continuum of special education services. We're instituting these assistant principals at the elementary schools, which will not help, not only just help our principals, but it's going to help staff, faculty, kids, families as well. We maintain all other staffing and program opportunities in this budget and ensures access to appropriate academic programming by placements that are sometimes outside of Penfield Central. And again, that zero property tax levy increase with this budget, the second of which in the last three years. So, next steps, as I mentioned, next Tuesday, the budget disclosures will be posted on the website and also available in all of the school buildings. Meet the candidate tonight for the open board seats is going to be also next Tuesday at 7:00 PM on PTV. May 2nd is the annual budget hearing here at PHS at 6:30 PM. Shortly thereafter, we'll mail the budget notice newsletter to the community. That's an annual requirement that the board is required to fulfill. And then at May 16th is that annual vote and statewide election from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM here at PHS's gymnasium with those three ballot propositions. So, we have the school operating budget for next year, the school bus purchase that we're putting forward and then those two, three-year Board of Education seats. So, any more discussion?
Thank you, Dan. That was lovely and thorough, as usual. Questions or comments for Dan? No, I, I, I have a question. Can you remind me, because I forgot, about the school bus proposition? It's, tell me what we're doing now, because we used to do a bus fund and now we don't do a bus fund, or we did or we did?
Yep, we have a, we have a bus capital reserve.
Okay.
So, the proposition will utilize the bus capital reserve. So, it's nine buses this year, five large diesel buses, two large electric buses. Those two are offset with the state grant and I'll talk about this more at the budget hearing, just to make sure everybody's clear. And then two mini buses as well. So, it's an all-up aggregate cost of $1.7 million, including the trade-in values that we receive on the buses that we're trading in and that money comes out of the capital reserve.
Right, so that doesn't, that's not influencing any tax?
Not a budget, it's not a tax.
It's like budget neutral. That's where I was going.
The money's essentially already aside in the bank and we just have to have permission by way of general municipal law to withdraw that money. Anytime you take money out of a capital reserve, you need voter approval.
Got it. Thank you. I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure.
Living in Penfield, a lot of times, you know, because we buy buses on a cycle and planful with that reserve, so I know in the community, I get asked a lot on why are we buying buses? Didn't we just buy buses? And the reality is, we're buying them because of our fleet of buses and once they hit certain mileage and age, we replenish because what you don't want is to have all of your buses needing to be replaced at the same time, you know, for the cost of a bus. And, you know, if you have two cars in your house, you, you know, at least I can only speak to the Putnam's is, you know, we don't want, we don't want, we want one payment for one car and the other one we drive until, until it dies and then, but we don't want both to die at the same time. So, it's that replacement cycle, but as Dan said, we have a reserve that was authorized by voters, but in order to pull from that, we have to get the voters to authorize it. So, it doesn't have an impact on, on the budget, just if, if it goes down, then we can't buy the buses and the money stays in the reserve, so.
Gotcha, thank you. Other questions on that? No, all right. Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
All right, we'll be moving on to public comment period. Instructions to participate in public comment period are listed in the agenda and available online. Individuals who choose to participate in public comment should note they agree to and are bound by the terms outlined in Policy 1515, which includes conducting themselves in a civil manner consistent with the district code of conduct, refraining from comments related to specific personnel or students, including names or other identifiable information such as job titles, grade levels, et cetera, refraining from slanderous statements, obscene language, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice. In order to protect individual rights, comments that are personal in nature should be brought to the attention of the board president and/or superintendent privately or in writing. Generally, the board does not respond to items presented by or questions raised by speakers during public comment. The superintendent or board president may provide a response in writing where it is warranted. warranted. The superintendent or board president may determine the need to correct inaccurate and/or misinformation that is shared. Should individuals act in a manner inconsistent with district protocols, this policy and/or the code of conduct, they may lose the privilege of the floor at this meeting and future meetings. Individuals scheduled to speak must limit their public comments to no more than three minutes and will be first recognized by the president. Once recognized, the person shall proceed to the designated table and identify their name and name of any organization if applicable, and a brief description of their topic to be addressed. We have one speaker this evening, and that's Ms. Katie Rig. That should be on, yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Katie Rig, and I'm the mom of two Scribner kids, and I co-lead Color Penfield Green. I'm also honored to be a member of the district's Sustainability Committee. Penfield's committee is completely unique in this region in that it is, it was founded by students and it is, it is led, it continues to be led by students, as you all know. There are dedicated adults, faculty, administrators, and community members part of this group, but the vast majority of the work that went into the plan was done by the incredibly capable, deeply knowledgeable students of the High School Environmental Club who have dedicated themselves to this profoundly important work. We need to take this plan seriously, and we need to act on it quickly for the sake of our children's future and their current mental health. And you, I want you to know tonight that you have the support of the community to do that. A survey was reported last year in The Lancet of 10,000 children and young people aged 16 to 25 in 10 countries, including the U.S. 59% were very or extremely worried about climate change. 84% were at least moderately worried. More than 45% of the respondents said that their feelings about climate change negatively affected their daily life and functioning. 75% said they think the future is frightening. 83% said they think people have failed to take care of the planet. We know we have a mental health crisis in our youth, and the causes are varied, but an uncertain future is certainly one. They say that action is the antidote to despair, and the plan that they put forward is an invitation to you to take action and respond to our students' despair about a future in a warming world. You have the community's support. In 2021, Yale Climate Communications surveyed voters and broke down their findings by county. Here in Monroe, across all voters, 61% think local officials should do more to address global warming. The Penfield community will support thoughtful, deliberate climate solutions, but that doesn't mean slow. Do it right, but do it rapidly because time is not on our side. Color Penfield Green wholeheartedly applauds the sustainability plan and asks that you prioritize the actions that will take the biggest bite out of our emissions: weatherization and electrification of the school buildings, continuing the transition to a zero emission transportation fleet, and diverting food waste to compost. We need to get creative about funding because many of these solutions do have an upfront cost that is significant, but unlike many other school programs, these are investments that will pay for themselves in the near future in actual money, and more importantly, in more hopeful students who know that their school leaders are doing all that they can for their future. Thank you for all the support that you guys have had for the kids and the Sustainability Committee over the last few years.
Board members, that brings us to item six. We have a change order. I know we haven't seen one of these in a while. Sounds like a change order. Oh, my. May I please have a motion in a second that the change order as listed in your agenda be approved as submitted? This was reviewed and supported by our architect, as well as George English and Dr. Driffl.
Some more.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Board members, may I please have a motion in a second that the budget for the 2023-24 school year be submitted to the voters for approval on May 16th, 2023, in the amount of $116,921,215.
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. We're on to item seven, our property tax report card. Each year prior to the school budget vote, all districts are required to submit a property tax report card to the New York State Education Department. The report includes information on the proposed school budget and the projected tax levy, as well as restricted, unrestricted, and appropriated fund balances. The required report showing information for '22-'23 and '23-'24 is attached. The property tax report card is due by the next business day after board approval, but no later than April 24th, 2023. Be it resolved that the Penfield Central School District Board of Education approve the 2023-24 property tax report card as presented. Be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance is directed to submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. May I please have a motion in a second?
Some more.
Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. On to item six, or I'm sorry, item eight. I was going backwards for a minute. May it be resolved that the board approves the written agreement between the Superintendent of Schools, the Penfield Administrative Council, and an employee of the district executed on April 12th, 2023? May I have a motion in a second, please?
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Thank you. We have policies for, these are second read policies, yes?
Right.
Okay. And have we had, I think we discussed these at the last meeting. Do we have, have we received any comments or questions on that? May I please have a motion in a second to approve Policy 6121, 7530, and 7670 as submitted?
Some more.
Second. Any questions or comments on the, I know we discussed those at the last meeting, but no? They're all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor and not opposed. Thank you. Now we're on to item 10. May I have a motion, please, in a second that the board approve Megan Doherty Esquire as chairperson of election for the May 16, 2023 budget vote and election?
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Okay, all in favor and not opposed. Did I say her name right?
Yes.
Oh, good. I know this name. May I also have a motion, a second, please, that the board approves Kathleen Zastro as chief election inspector for the May 16, 2023 budget vote and election?
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Thank you. And lastly, we're going to approve inspectors and assistant clerks. May I please have a motion in a second that a board approves the individuals named above in the agenda to serve as election inspectors and assistant clerks at the May 16, 2023 budget vote and election?
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Thank you. And then we're moving on, present remarks and presentations. We have our board meeting schedule that I think we discussed at our last meeting. Do we approve this? Oh, we approve this. All right. Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember that. May I have a motion, please, in a second that the board approves the 2023-24 Board of Education meeting schedule as listed in your agenda?
Some more.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Thank you so much. And we're going to move on to some committee meetings. Our first one, actually, our first two. Mark, you're up. Labor Relations Steering Committee.
One moment.
That's okay.
So the Labor Relations Meeting was a presentation on the RASHP-2 update, and RASHP is the, Dr. Driffl can correct me, Rochester area school health plans, is that correct? I mean, I know what it is, I can't remember the acronym. But that is, that is the self-funded, self-insured organization that all, that most of the districts are members of. It's something that does provide a lot of cost savings over just using a general insurance fund. And the presentation was a lot about what they've seen in the past year, what's coming up, the anticipations, and some of the examples. This started, and there's a lot of information, I'll skip over a lot of it. It started in 2014, 2004, and the value plan, so we talk about different tiers of plans, but the value plan has doubled in cost every 10 years. And we talk about, you know, why benefits keep going up, you know, this, our costs and the costs of everybody go double every 10 years. One of the trends is the high deductible enrollment is rising, and is, and this is system-wide, this is not specifically for this district, and is greater than the select plan, so high deductible is gaining traction. The, let's see, and when we look at the cost, so again, this is one of the nice things about what we have in terms of our, of the school districts getting together and creating this program, is 90% of the premiums go to pay claims, and only 3% go to administrative costs. So when you think about all the executives at various health insurance companies and all the administrative costs, we have 3% that goes to that versus whatever they have. So it is, it is a very cost-efficient program that we're in. And we consistently have lower increases than Exelis and another one, I wrote National, I can't remember the full name of it. But we, our increases are consistently lower, so we continue to benefit, you know, we step ahead every year in lower increases, lower costs. So, you know, every year, but when you compound that, we're far ahead of what we would be if we have not done that. The, I would just say in terms of future improvements, there, you know, one of the things they see going on as far as the health trends in general is site of care optimization, transparency tools for viewing potential medical care costs, and we always hear about surprise medical bills. You know, they're, part of this is to try to eliminate that, make it much more transparent to the policyholders, you know, that ties into the No Surprise Billing Act, promoting the high deductible health plan, as well as the, I'm thinking of what it is now, the savings with?
Health savings account?
Health savings account, right, HSA. And then wellness incentives. So, and then, and talk about national trends, which we see with, like everywhere else, you know, there are shortages of providers, you know, trying to get someone to get an appointment, it's a shortage and that's a continued problem. And the, and there should be an increased use of digital solutions, so just using, you know, all the different electronic platforms, technology to try to continue to provide good service, keep the cost down, and address shortages. So that's, I could bore you even more, but that's the, that's the bulk of what we talked about. And again, this is the kind of thing that saves us year in, year out, and that we, you know, we're very fortunate to have this.
Great. Questions for Mark, anyone, on that? No? Thank you, Mark. Do, oh, do you have comments on the Steering Committee meeting, too?
I do not, I don't, I did not go to the Steering Committee, I had a conflict.
Thank you. Krista, were you able to attend the legislative meeting?
No, I wasn't. I had a conflict as well.
Okay, thank you. And then we have district committee meetings, code of conduct, that was myself and Nicole. Hi. I was thinking, what did we do? But now I remember, so if you don't remember, I can help.
I just remember that we finished this, this sort of, small groups finished up writing our portion of the code, and we were sort of prepping for the community meeting, which didn't happen.
Correct, because of the power being out, which is rescheduled for May the 8th. Okay. Which will still be here in the comments. Yes? Okay.
That's all I remember.
Yeah, no, that's what I remember, too. So that was good, because I was like, oh, my gosh, it all starts to blend together. I was like, what exactly did we do? But we continued to break in small groups, which was really great, and continued to work on different sections of writing different sections. And then I know behind the scenes, you could probably explain this better, that I know that the Children's Institute is working with some different administrators, right, behind the scenes to work on some of those more functional?
So in partnership with the Children's Institute, I've scheduled accordion sessions, so we are getting around to meet with some of our other district stakeholder groups. So for example, yesterday, we met with our teachers' union. A representative from each of the buildings was part of a review of some of the code of conduct development writing that we've already done. There is a meeting scheduled later this week for our teaching assistants. We are meeting with transportation, food service, lunch monitors, recess monitors, and, let's see, who else do we have on the list? Clerks, secretaries, there's a long list of folks. We want to make sure that we have access to their voices and input as we're continuing to develop. We have athletics, we have drama club, a number of groups. We have student advisory here at the high school and at the middle school, so that we can bring more student voice in. And so as we're continuing to compile all of that feedback, it will help us to make sure that we're incorporating it into the draft that we'll present to the community before we close out at the end of the school year.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Anyone have questions for Dr. Potter? Because I probably can't answer any on that. Okay. Then we have, oh, Audit Committee. You want to take Audit Committee?
Okay, so we had our meeting on March 30th, and we looked over our internal control risk assessment that was done, which is something that's done annually, and basically it's to look at our procedures and checks and balances that we have in place. Everything was pretty good. The only recommendation that came out of it was to make sure that we test our backup generators or tested weekly where they turn on, but we haven't, we had not had had a low test, which means, goddamn, correct me if I'm wrong, but it actually powers the whole thing on, in simplest terms, is that accurate? Like, we turn on, but every week, but it doesn't like shoot to the full generator, but I am so not into it. But, yeah, I understood it when the guy explained it. But that was already a plan in place where that was done the following week where they were doing that. And then there was just discussion around what our next audit would be, and we're contemplating the, looking at facility use, because that hasn't been audited since 2014. Did I miss anything?
No, you got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions for Audit Committee?
You're welcome for that scientific explanation.
It was wonderful and scientific. You remembered.
Nope.
All righty, and then our Meet the Candidates night is scheduled for April 25th. This is just a reminder that this meeting will be livestreamed. It will not have a live audience, so you can view it on TV. Your questions that you would like to be sent in for potential candidates could be sent to Kathleen's office, or I know that I've seen, for, you know, for my kids, a couple PTAs have, you know, sent out social media posts, and so you could also send that through to your PTA. And I don't think we have any unfinished business. Do we have any new business this evening? No? All right. Well, then I, can I please have a motion in a second that we adjourn at 8:06 PM?
Some more.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.